It is March 7, 2022. I'd like to start off with a call to order and a roll call, please.
Chairman McGee?
He's not here.
Vice Chairman Hauser?
Here.
Secretary Sage?
Here.
Mayor Bixson?
Here.
Commissioners Clark Martin?
Here.
Gasson?
Here.
King?
Here.
Lord?
Here.
Stone?
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum. Would we all rise and do the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chairman, maybe, I don't know why Scott and James are here, but if it's for the master plan, it's not on the agenda. So you want to start with that?
Sure.
So I can give an update. So at our last meeting, everybody, we're having technical difficulties in-house here right now trying to... Without Siana here, it's been a little bit of a challenge. We haven't got the new building clerk yet. No excuse, I'm going to take the blame for it. That, we've got, it's a challenge to get the agenda out. We got it out. There's no link for some reason in the agenda, even though it says there is one. So Vidi was having a hard time getting it. Everybody was, so I apologize for that. On the original agenda, it had the master plan to go on for discussion tonight. You all at your last meeting said we need more time to look at it. You were supposed to get a package from the consultant that had the new master plan. That's what I have for mayor. I got it printed out for you. I'll bring it down. You're all going to get one, but... And then the changes in encapsulated sidebar, so you would know what it was. We thought that went out also. Found out today at 4 o'clock, that did not go out to you when I talked to the mayor. So huge disconnect, so we have two things we can do. You can't do, you can't, you could tonight, take action, but how, why would you do that if you don't even know what the changes were, right? So we could set a special meeting, anytime you want. We can wait till next month. The problem for administrations, we've been trying to keep this on track for two months, right? We were going to have a public hearing with the city council at the end of February, but then when you guys rightly saw, said, hey, we need some more time, we moved that to the end of March. So it's now scheduled for March 28th. We don't want to have that until you all look at it. So we could call a special meeting just to talk about that. You're going to, I think tonight, you already got the information that you were supposed to get last, last week in your emails. It came from Laura Kavanaugh. So she sent the new master plan electronically and the change stated. So we would hope that you could reach out to Michelle or Rowan, that's what I think it says, to talk about any changes you might want to see if you, if something doesn't look right to you. Or we could do that at another special meeting. We could wait till April's meeting and then delay the public hearing, the city council, deeper into April. I apologize profusely. This isn't how we wanted it to go. There's a lot going on around here, so you get no excuses. So it's up to you, if you guys would like to do a special meeting just for that item. If in fact, nobody had any comments, then we'd open the meeting and close it. We could wait till April, whatever you all would like to do.
Sure.
And I apologize.
No, I certainly recognize this is, everyone is, you know, without Siana, it's, it's been a challenge and we get it. Everyone's working very hard. I guess maybe I would ask the fellow commissioners, you know, just by show of hands, is there any preference one way or the other as to whether or not we want to do a special meeting? Or alternatively, if we would like to have it in the April meeting? And I guess maybe just show of hands, who would be in favor of a special meeting? Speak now. Oh, go ahead, Commissioner Stone.
Nick, can you give any insight as to what we might see coming in at April meeting in addition to the master plan? If we say wait a month?
Yeah, you would just, it's, again, it's in your email boxes now. It's Rowan did a summary of the eight or nine comments that were made. Nothing monumental. Chairman McGee, even though he's in Florida, texted me tonight and said, asked me if I made sure I mentioned to put the school board piece as a potential peak. I said, we brought that up, it didn't get any traction. So he was okay with that, but nothing other than what we, what Rowan did at the last meeting. Same exact thing. But you all wanted to see it codified. That's what he did. So I'm sorry, I, it's nothing different than what Rowan said, yeah.
Let me clarify, so in addition to the master plan review, do you know of any projects that are scheduled to be on the April docket for us to look at?
We hope that the carports come back there. They had a neighbor issue that they wanted to work out, so they came back with full answers. So that's right now the only one that I know. Joey Lachirco, in talking with him, he's got an easement problem down on the cement plant, so he withdrew on his own until he can work that out. So I'm guessing carports. And then if tonight Pfizer, I'm sorry, yeah, Pfizer gets through, we would set the public hearing for the April meeting. So it would be that item and the carports, and then if you wanted the master plan.
That's right, okay. And that would be April 4th, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, any other questions?
Wayne and I had talked, and we could do the 21st or the 24th of March. We already publicized the public hearing for city council, so we can always put it in the paper and say it's rescheduled again. But we could stay on that track if you all had a meeting on the 21st or 24th.
Correct me if I'm wrong, do we also have a meeting on March 17th?
No, the first one started in April. That's what I thought too, but...
That one's off. Okay, so either we have a special one, you said the 21st, you said?
24th, yeah.
Or the 24th, or kick it to April 4th. Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I'm good with not having a special meeting, and we can kick the city council meeting back one more meeting. Because we're not, we want to get it done, but it doesn't have to be, if there's time.
And I think, that's very important, thank you, Mr. Mayor, that. We're not under any rules. It's our own self-imposed. We were trying to get this done so we can get done.
All right. So it looks like city council, Mr. Mayor, would be amenable to April 4th. Is there anyone who would be against an April 4th? Raise your hand. Okay, yes?
I'll be absent on April 4th. And let's, I believe that's spring break, or maybe I'm not actually, hang on.
Spring break, until April 17th.
It's the week after spring break.
Oh yeah, depending on...
Never mind. Yeah. Okay, yeah, never mind.
Okay. You okay?
Good.
Okay. Are you... Okay, so...
So we will, so in your, I'm going to print them out also, and we'll get those delivered to you. So you have a physical packet, and you've now got an electronic packet.
Okay.
And then that way, everybody's on the same page when we go in. Sorry, James and Scott.
Want to send James a copy too, electronically?
Absolutely.
You can still stay for the remainder of the meeting. Okay, so do we need to do a motion or anything? No, it's all said administratively. Okay, so the agreement is, is that we will consider and discuss the changes to the master plan at the April 4th, 2022 Planning Commission meeting.
And Mr. Chairman, we also already fulfilled our obligation. We had the public hearing. This was just follow-up, so we're okay there. We don't have to re-advertise. It will show on the agenda that we're going to have a discussion item, so the public would know that it's on the agenda though.
Okay.
For transparency.
All right, thank you.
I'm so sorry.
No, it's okay.
It's not good.
All right. Anything else on that end?
That's it.
Okay. All right, let's move on to agenda item number three, public comment. Is there anyone on the phone?
I don't believe that there is. They would show up up there.
They would show up up there? Okay, is there anyone in the...
Just Vidi and...
Anyone in the room for a public comment? Okay, I will close public comment. Moving on to item agenda number four, approval of the minutes. Consideration of the minutes of the regular meeting of February 7th, 2022. I believe these were emailed to us as well. Did everyone have a chance to see those? I'm sure, yeah. Okay, they were emailed to us. Okay. Anyone want to make a...
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Support?
Support.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Vice Chairman Hauser?
Yes.
Secretary Sage?
Yes.
Mayor Bixson?
Yes.
Commissioners Clark Martin?
Yes.
Gasson?
Mr. Chairman, I did not see that, receive it. Would it be appropriate to abstain, or is that not a proper action?
I don't, they were emailed. I know we received them via email.
I'm just saying personally, I didn't see it.
No, I understand. I don't know...
You, um, it's a good question. You could abstain if you feel like you haven't been able to see them.
Yeah, I would abstain. I just don't know if that was appropriate action.
Sure.
We emailed them, but yeah.
Yeah.
But Attorney Crock, he probably knows.
Oh, yep. Jeff, are you there? Yes. Attorney Crock?
He's on mute.
Jeff, can you unmute?
Yeah, no, I'm here. I was, I was actually just looking online. They, they do show up in the online packet, which doesn't mean anything for Mr. Gasson's question, but I think that it's, that he can abstain if he's not comfortable with that. That's, that's perfectly fine.
Okay, wonderful. Okay. All right, thank you. Okay, number...
You want to keep going with the roll call?
Yes, please, yes.
Commissioner King?
Yes.
Lord?
Yes.
Stone?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, line item number five, public hearings. Nick, would that just go under number six then?
Yeah, there, yeah, zero, yeah. We'll have a public hearing this evening, yes, sir.
Okay, number six, considerations. Letter A, reconsideration of site plan for, in addition to the Pfizer building, to house a new water for injection still to be located at 1200 Parkdale. Vidi?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I may, please be given a screen sharing provisions. I would appreciate it. Whoever is monitoring the Zoom. I will, as soon as I get it, I will put up the plan on the screen, okay? Let me just, one second, it's not showing up on, okay. I need to...
Yeah, Blaine's got control, so...
Yes, I got it.
Okay.
Thank you. Is everybody able to see the site plan on your screen, please?
Yes.
Okay. The applicant Pfizer received Planning Commission approval in October of 2020 to build an approximately 714 square foot, single-story addition to accommodate what they called a water-for-injection still. Now, this site is located east of Power Pharmaceuticals. You're all familiar with it. It's on the south side of Parkdale, and the site has a total area of 24.91 acres. Now, the site is Zoned RP, which is Research Park, and proposed use for the pharmaceutical industry is a principal permitted use in this district. At this time, the site plan that is submitted is labeled as WFI still replacement, and the size of the addition is noted as 460 square feet. So first and foremost, we wanted a clarification from the applicant as to where the original approval was left off. Was the original approved still not constructed at all? Is this another proposal, a smaller proposal, or is it a replacement? So clarification is basically needed as to what is this proposal when compared to what the Planning Commission approved in October 2020. Our suggestion is they put a side-by-side sheet where they actually show what was approved in 2020 and what is being requested at this time. So the Planning Commission has a context of what is being asked for is basically the same thing or not. Now, the addition that the applicant is proposing is the same height as the building. Previously, when they received approval, it was on the higher side. Going to scroll, there are a lot of sheets over here, so I'm hoping there's a bunch of engineering sheets too, and it scrolls really slow. So at the time, the Planning Commission had expressed concern about the location of the still and its visibility from Parkdale. And the applicant had submitted line of sight diagrams, basically showing that the still will barely be visible. So this is the building, and the height of the addition is the same as the building itself. The Planning Commission was concerned whether this is going to be seen from Parkdale, and Pfizer had submitted at the time line of sight diagrams, which are not there in the packet at this time. So my recommendation is that they provide those sheets once again, just to reassure the Planning Commission that the setting of this addition is going to be no more imposing than it previously was. Now, on the south side, we do have an overhead door and a pedestrian-sized door. We need to see a truck circulation diagram for how trucks would access this door and leave. There is a large square mechanical unit shown on top here. Not sure what its function is and how this unit will appear, if it needs to be screened or not. Now, the facade does show a couple of wall-mounted light fixtures. This one that is labeled number five, and this one. Manufacturer's cut-sheet details for these two fixtures have been provided, and they're actually labeled as floodlights. While I can see that this addition is located far inside the site, and these fixtures are, you know, not exactly on the street itself, when you have fixtures that are labeled as floodlights and that are LED lights, they are visible even at a significant distance. To be on the safer side, especially since lighting has been such a point of concern at the city, we would recommend that they go back previously to what they had shown, downward-directed and shielded light fixtures. And finally, a clarification if any additional sound will be generated by this WFI still more than what is typical for the site for their regular industrial operations. If that information is provided on revised set of plans, we believe the proposal can be scheduled for a public hearing and consideration of site plan approval at your next meeting. I would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Alex is from here from Pfizer, maybe he can answer some of those questions for us.
Sure.
Alex, if you want to go over to the mic there, please. And I think, I think Vidi sent her comments to your, the people that were on your application.
Yes.
And I think she's let you know that today, so they, somebody got that information.
Excellent.
Good evening. Good evening, please.
So, quick introduction. So my name's Alex Phalen. I am the project manager and civil engineer for the whiffy replacement project, here representing Pfizer. Also, I've got David Sepo here, Pfizer project representative. So between the two of us, hopefully, we can answer all these questions for you. So just a couple of things to clarify. So the Pfizer plant currently, what it has inside of it is already a whiffy still, so this is the water-for-injection still, and that's their only still that they have inside the building. So this project is intended to replace that still in the event it were to fail. So basically, it's kind of like a redundancy project. And we've come to you guys, I want to say at least three or four times now, with the hopes of constructing a project. So we've gotten your approval last year for this project. Unfortunately, we weren't able to get it, the, the building to go under construction. Now, we've come back to you guys with a very reduced site plan in a much smaller building in hopes that we can get this project under construction. So it is, it is to replace the previously approved project. It is not a new project on top of what happened last year, unfortunately. So I brought some stuff with me that I was hoping that I could present and show you, but it sounds like we're having some technical difficulties, so I will do my best to try and kind of get through it here. So I think I already clarified that it's just basically replace the Wi-Fi, or the previous still that's inside the building. The height clarification, this building is intended to be the same height as the existing building is currently. The previous project was at 25 feet tall, whereas now we're in the 17 to 18-foot range, which is existing building height. See here, there's a note about the overhead door with circulation. So that door's primary use is actually for fork trucks to access it, so there'd be pallets of salt, things like that will actually be going into the building. It'll rarely be used. In fact, we considered even putting a gate up in front of the door because it's, it's not going to get used that often. So no big box trucks or semis will be backing up into that. Then the floodlights. So we actually submitted two cut sheets for lighting. The building on the perimeter actually has Lithuania wall packs, which are actually what was approved the last time. But in addition to that, there are lights that are called floodlights, but what those are actually, they're not acting like your traditional floodlight would. What they do is they're intended to shine down on the roof. So they're floodlights to illuminate the roof essentially. And that's basically for personnel safety. So there's people that'll have to go up on the roof when it's dark out, and that's what those lights are intended for. So they won't, like I said, work in a traditional flooding where they, you know, just throw light up against the building or something like that. They are directed downwards. So I think the, the term on that cut sheet is probably a little misleading by calling them floodlights. So hopefully that addresses that concern. Yeah, so in terms of the sound, so there are whiffy stills in the building. There's really no sound to them. Essentially, they're just water purification devices. It purifies the water to injection standards. So there will not be any additional noise that would be created by the addition of the still. So going off of memory, I think those were all the questions.
I think so. Alex, I would suggest that you would put that in verbiage to Vidi so she can address either a note on the plan, so she can know that all of her answers were done. It's, that's a simple fix.
Absolutely, and I, I did that this morning, and I brought it with me. I was hoping to present that to you guys, that we are certainly going to be able to address all these concerns that are there, and then also answer any questions that you may have about the project.
Okay. At this time, are there any questions from the commissioners that you would like to bring to the applicant? Commissioner?
Clark Martin?
I believe I asked this last time. Does, will it impact the traffic on Parkdale? The construction?
The construction?
And if so, yeah.
It should not. They've got multiple entrances, entrances to get on this facility. I would suspect any traffic would come from the rear entrance. It'd be very difficult for semis to bring in the equipment, the big iron bars, things like that. So I would suspect there's going to be no impacts to Parkdale.
Thank you.
Anyone? Commissioner Sage?
Thank you, sir. And thank you for presenting tonight. Just a clarification, maybe I misunderstood, replacement versus redundancy. So the current still remains. There's just a new still being installed as well?
Yeah, exactly. So there's a new still, or a current still that's in the building. It's buried deep in the building, and it's very difficult to get a new still in there. They're very large. So it, it is to replace that still when it does go bad. But it will also sort of extend the season until that time happens, and that is the new one, or the old one.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, one more, just, Alex, if you could get her the line of sight, just even though it's, it's better that it's lower now, so that takes away that concern, but just so Vidi has that, maybe they can modify that drawing.
Any other questions from the commission? Mr. Stone?
The planner brought up an air handling unit near the, the new roll-up door, or whatever it was you guys have for truck access or access to the building.
Right there, to the right, on the top, right there, in the middle.
There you go. So I assume that's added because there's not enough existing heating and cooling for that little addition?
Yeah, that's correct, yep. We did everything that we could to try and show that the existing HVAC could handle this addition and not have to provide any more heating or cooling or airflow. Unfortunately, we weren't able to get the calculations to work out, so we do need to add a new HVAC unit. And really, that's to, you know, keep the temperature of this room at optimal production. There's a, you know, temperature range that these stills need to have, and unfortunately, that's why that's being added.
So, if I may, I think, I think what's in, you're going, about to say is, Vidi's got to analyze, does it have to be screened or not? Or is it a color that's complimentary? Is it blocked by other units? Because anything on top of a roof has to be screened. But if there's already units up there, that's different. So you sure want to know what's on that roof at this time.
Okay, yeah, we can certainly look at...
There's pictures, even of what's there.
Yeah, what's there, and then, yeah, if need be, we can look at screening, things like that, for sure.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions from the commissioners? All set? Okay. Well, thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so next would be open up for public, or to set it for a public hearing.
Correct, a motion.
All right. So you'll have a motion to set it for a public hearing.
So moved.
Okay.
Support?
Okay. Roll call, please.
Did you get that to the mayor? Yep.
Vice Chairman Hauser?
Uh, yes.
Secretary Sage?
Yes.
Mayor Bixson?
Yes.
Commissioners Clark Martin?
Yes.
Gasson?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Lord?
Yes.
Stone?
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you, thank you.
All right, so next issue, number seven, miscellaneous?
We're going to do better.
No, it's, you know, we get it. There's a lot of stuff going on, and I understand the staffing has been in a state of flux. You're not alone in that situation, so it's, we get it. I think I would like to just say one thing, is I, I watched the city council meeting on Monday, and I noticed that everyone was up at the, the main table there. And I'm just wondering, is that a possibility? Oh.
Yep, so that was under my miscellaneous. I was going to say that, so we wanted, we talked to, to James, or to Chris that was with CMN TV. So it's what you're comfortable with. So there's a lot more of you than there are city council. So we can do this a couple ways. We would like to have you back up there. Council is comfortable with that, and we've been very conservative.
Of course.
Right, Mayor? So if you're comfortable with that, even if we put two wings down here, so there's seven here and two down here, because I think Mr. McGee just texted me, he might not make back for April, but we're going to have eight or nine. So saw the report today, things are getting a lot better. That's awesome. I'm even here, and I'm pretty conservative. So we could either shift down two seats here, but don't want to offend anybody. We could put two little tables here, or we could go back up there, but that's, it's your comfortable level.
And I think what we need to do is, and again, is get everyone's thought process on this, because everyone is different, and I think we have to respect everyone's viewpoint on this. And I guess I would just ask, you know, again, show of hands, is there, let me figure how I want to do this. Show of hands, everyone sits up at the table, how it would be pre-March 2020, so... Okay.
That makes it easy.
All right, I think there's your answer.
Okay, that's awesome.
Okay.
Because we, the council is right, we don't like this mess.
Right.
It's tougher on people, but we want to go back to putting our chairs and everything. We're going to do that for the next council meeting, so that way we don't have to keep changing, that's great.
Agreed, and I think it's, it's completely fine to, to take the temperature, not figure people, you know, just saying, hey, listen, how does everyone feel about this? And, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, so, but one thing with council is we changed where we had the city manager, the clerk.
That's true.
And the attorney now down here, so there's only seven of us.
Yep.
So there's more room, where in theory, we have nine up there, and, you know, the numbers are down, but, you know, we're right on top of each other again.
Is it possible, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't have, I didn't have...
Yeah, we can have staff, I agree. We should have staff down here for sure. We'll get down there.
Right, but, you know, he said that you could have one extra, so it's a little more spread out, and I would be in favor of that.
Yeah, or alternatively, we have, how many does that seat normally?
Like seven, comfortable.
Okay, so to the extent that there's that, and then Mr. Banden, Mr. Kred, I guess, remember, you guys used to sit at the tables up at the front here.
Right, right.
So I don't know if that's a possibility to, you know, to, and then get these out of here and put the chairs back, to try and get some semblance of, of...
Yep, we can spread them out as far as we can.
Sure, of course. And then let me ask another question, because I noticed on city council meeting, you had the, the plastic barriers up. Is that something that council or the commissioners would want? Or do you feel that maybe they don't have the intended purpose, and you're okay with sitting next to someone? Again, you're laughing, Mr. Stone. Again, you're laughing, Mr. Stone, I have to ask these hard-hitting questions.
Our favorite thing is everybody leans back behind them and says.
Yes, exactly, and cough to your right. So, I guess the question is, is I'm okay if the plastic barriers aren't there, but again, I respect everyone's personal point of view on this, and show of hands, do you want the plastic? Raise your hand. Okay.
Those are great.
Okay.
Done, we will take yours.
Thank you very much. Okay, I have nothing else, I'm miscellaneous. Anyone else have an issue they would like to bring up during this particular line item?
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
More informational, maybe educational. When we approve something here at the planning commission, it goes away, and then we see a building later or a site plan improvement. I'm wondering what happens, and maybe Nick could address, what does our approval do? Is it a piece of paper that goes through city hall somehow and attaches to a building permit? And who administers our approval, like the, the, I'm not sure what to call it?
The follow-through?
Administrative official for the planning commission. What is that?
Gotcha, so I think that's a great question. So, if you're back in the Wayback Machine, that's how we ended up with Siana's position, because there is a lack of confidence in the planning commission and city council, not in a violent way, just in a common way, like we saw a building that didn't have that door there, and why, who followed up on that? So, the answer, the short answer is, the building official gets, as soon as your plans are done, as soon as you're approved, we send them back to Vidya, make sure there's nothing, if there was a condition, which we're trying to not do, we want final plans done, so they have a physical, the physical drawing that you all saw, we stamp it approved, the developer gets one, the building official gets one, and one goes in the file. So, then, that's after Vidya takes a look at them, she writes a letter to Siana saying, this is exactly what the planning commission approved. Then we sit down with the building official and his job is to look at that drawing to here. If during the code, and this is what happened, which is the, we fixed it and rightly so, it's a little frustrating for staff, because this ordinance, the way it's set up is, staff has no authority at all to modify anything that was approved by this planning commission or in a special project from the city council. Other communities, you have a 5%, you can make minor changes, but we decided not to do that. So, if Randy is reviewing the plans, and this happened with Sid a few times, and the architect drew up his drawing, we all approved a building, and there's a window in a elevator shaft that they didn't realize when they drew it, the architects drew it, right now, if we, when Randy notices that, he looks at the two sets of plans, I go over with him, and we sit down and say, oh, boy, that comes back here for a modification to a site plan, doesn't need a public hearing, but, and then we ask you all, we did it with the Boron Station or the BP Station, right? Fred came back and said, oh, I screwed up, I, the parapet was rotted, so I had to redo it. We made him come back here. So, somebody else did it and went ahead and just did it, and then when we caught him, we made him come back to get it right with the planning commission. So, the check and balances, the building official's responsibility is to check that plan that was approved here. That's why we're such sticklers, and Vidya's such a stickler, like, put it on paper, if you're not going to build it, you're going to have a problem, you're not getting a building permit till the two drawings match up. And we, and it's been really smooth the last two years.
That was the old 7-Eleven.
That's correct, that too, yep.
Just to follow up to that, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, of course.
Is there an official, like zoning or site plan approval permit that's issued? I mean, our ordinance talks about that, I don't remember what the wording is, but zoning compliance permit, I'll just say, it's something like that.
Yeah, there, good question there, so I noticed years ago there was a zoning, zoning compliance officer, zoning compliance letter, never saw one in the 13 years I've been here. It's another one of those like the ZBA, there's rules, we don't follow them. I've never seen a zoning compliance letter. To us, that was, people write me, got one today, says, does my building comply? That's different than when it's done, does it comply? So, the certificate of occupancy in my mind is that document. If they get that, my guy is saying they did exactly what they told this body and if the city council had to do so. That CFO is that zoning compliance letter, it, the way that it's been administered, so.
If I could just follow it one more time.
Of course, sure.
Would it be a good idea for us, there might be other things like that, housekeeping sort of things, that we're, we're comfortable with the process we have, should we alter our written rule to jive with that, or just eliminate the rule and let it happen the way administration feels is necessary?
And I, again, to the chair, so we worked on this with the ZBA and there's a conflict of way, how we're policy and what we're doing in the ZBA, and we talked to Attorney Croft, and that was, we're following the state law in ZBA, which is, it conflicts with what we said in our rules, and David brought it up at a meeting, saying, well, I got this handbook and it says you're going to do this. Never saw that before, but it's there, he was 100% right, so Attorney Croft, you want to weigh in, but we could adjust whatever documents there are out there, if it's the same kind of a document, to make sure we're doing it as what our policy is here now. So, I'm not sure exactly where that's at, but again, is it in the planning rules someplace, or?
I'm going from some pretty vague memory.
Yeah.
And I was really wanting to learn, I understand now how we do it, but if it doesn't align, maybe it does, if it doesn't align, should we correct it?
I think, I think yes, I think yes.
Mr. Chen?
Yes, go ahead, Vidya.
If, yes, if I may just add to that, what we do typically in some of my other communities is, in one of my other clients, I do serve there as their zoning administrator. So, as a zoning administrator, the first step is, somebody wants to build something, they have to turn in something called a zoning compliance application. I review that and approve or disapprove or approve it at conditions, and that zoning compliance is basically just a one-sheet paper that says, yes, the use is approved or it's denied. If it's approved, you need administrative approval or you need planning commission approval and city council approval. It just sets the fundamentals. Then the applicant goes ahead and applies for site plan approval, goes through the process, just like this, it's approved. Then it goes through engineering, it gets constructed. Once the construction is complete, I am called in to do a final site inspection. At that time, I take the site plan that has been approved by the planning commission, I go out on the site and I actually physically check if all the trees are there, if all the buildings are there. Rochester probably has somebody doing it in-house. So, I do a final site inspection, and if it matches what the planning commission has approved, I issue a letter saying this site is in final site compliance with the approved plans, and then the building official will issue the CFO. So, CFO does not get issued, CFO is not merely the building plans complying, it is also the site plans complying. But the building official is the one who issues the CFO, I issue the letter that says the site is finally site compliant. So, there is multiple checks and balances there.
And so, I, and I think that's very efficient. So, how it works here is, we have different departments, so after the person says, I'm done with the tide cleaners, perfect example, example, so they got done, so we're ready to go and get a CFO. Randy comes to me, okay, you go check the site plan, engineers, you go check the parking lot, Jason, you go check to make sure all the right-of-way is done, so we have four or five of us go out and we sign a list, sign on Randy's checklist, planning's done, et cetera, so everybody signed off, he can't issue that CFO until all the departments signed off on it. So, we have a multitude of people doing what Vidya just said, so same thing, just a little bit different way to do it.
Okay.
Sorry, if I could just, one, in response to what the planner just said, I thought that was very interesting, if I understood it right, there's a potential step early that if, as she called her administrator, says that's compliant, maybe it doesn't need to be a planning commission item, maybe it's purely compliant.
That one sheet?
And I guess it's got to be really simple, but if there are such things, and I can't recall any of those coming to us, but if there's a step that could be considered when you're looking at our process, that, that could be at least introduced, that'd be an interesting thing for us to do.
Like an alteration or deviation from what was initially planned versus what wants to be done?
And I wouldn't say after we looked at it, I mean.
Before.
Before we get it and we never see it, it's just like a minor ordinance compliance thing, I can't even think of an example.
So, we have that also, so it's called a change of tendency, so somebody comes in and says, hey, I want to put, I want to move into the Village Shoe Inn and sell different shoes. They're changing owners, that triggers something for us to say, so it goes to fire, building, all the trades, and me. So, we all go out and look at it and say, you're not doing anything that is worthy of going to the planning commission, because you're not touching the building, but we, they make a sign saying, so when I go to their lender, my use is approved by the zoning ordinance, et cetera. So, so we have that also, it's just, it doesn't ever come here.
Okay.
Great, I was just curious.
Yeah, yeah.
Commissioner Clark Martin?
So, my question, Vidya, that, that one sheet, the zoning compliance one sheet?
Uh huh.
Do you find that simplifies the builder's process, you know, so that they understand what the expectations are? I know I've worked in communities where that's, that's required.
Yes, that is exactly what it does.
Yeah.
Because if, by telling the zoning compliance, like sometimes an applicant will submit it and I'll say, okay, the use that is being proposed is a principal permitted use, but these are, it needs to go before the planning commission, at this time, it does not appear to comply with this. So, it sort of gives them a preliminary idea as to what the expectations will be in step two, so that they can decide if they want to proceed or back off and not go through the whole site plan process and then say, I didn't expect to have to spend so much and, you know, do engineering or whatever, because in that particular municipality, unlike Rochester where after planning commission is done, they really start on full engineering, in that municipality, planning and engineering have to be done simultaneously. Planning commission will not grant final site plan approval till final engineering is done. So, it sort of gives an applicant a good idea of whether they want to proceed with the project or not, and it's a much smaller municipality than Rochester, not in terms of land area, but in terms of population, and they require zoning compliance for every small thing. If you're building a deck, all single-family homes too, everybody, anything that you build has to go through zoning compliance, so.
Wonderful.
That's, that's one way of looking at it.
Okay, wonderful. Any other comments or questions from the commission? No? Okay. Back to public comment, another round, I guess, if anyone is on it.
Is anybody up there?
No, I don't either. Okay, and then number nine, upcoming agenda items for April 4th, obviously we have the master plan and then.
I believe that the carports from the Forest Ridge, so what happened was, if you can picture on First Street, so they took all the comments that you all had, remember we talked about Vidya, they met with Vidya, and they came to an agreement about the islands in the middle, and they, it was a very productive meeting, we sat down and hacked it out, so they're going to come back and comply. And then out of nowhere, one of the neighbors off of Second Street lives next to the Far East parking lot. She's been notified, she admitted she'd been notified, every single public hearing, never showed up. So, she called me and said, I'm going to see the back of the carports, because they're right on her property line, five feet off the property line. Okay, so how about you meet with the owners of Forest Ridge and what would you like? I don't know. Well, so I gave her some suggestions, called Kate and said, maybe put some evergreens down there, something to at least block that a bit for her up to the front of her home, they've agreed to it, they want her to sign off, so she doesn't come here and say she didn't talk to them. They want to be, no more, they want to say, we got everything asked and did everything Vidya wanted, because they're, I'll give them credit, they're working hard at this, and I think they really want to go forward with it, so. And then, again, Mr. Lucherco, and you might find this interesting, you never really saw the plans, I don't believe it, didn't get that far. Remember in his presentation, he talked about a four-story building in the middle, and then he called them three stories, but they're four-story buildings around the periphery, along the river and along the road, or the diversion, so, so we told, call them what they are, if they're four-story buildings, they're four-story, that's fine. He has a good plan, self-parked, all that good stuff, major land issues on two fronts, floodplain, so I said, kind of along Vidya's line, I'm not going to the planning commission and have Vidya write a report, and then we find out later, you can't encroach in that floodplain. Go to the AEW, let's get a preliminary engineering review, just like Mr. Randazzo did, so we can confidently say, you're not going to void everything, we just worked all these meetings to get done, and then you can't build there. So, he agreed to that, so they, they worked on that, and I think they have a solution. You may or may not remember this, but on the drawing, there's a 30-foot easement that comes off at diversion, cuts through on a curve to get back to Van Horns. When he first came in, he didn't own Van Horns, so it didn't matter. Now he owns Van Horns, so he made the project bigger. He expanded his detention pond, which is better, kept it out of the floodplain. Problem is that easement goes to Van Horns and touches the property to the south, which is owned by Mr. Crook, which is in Rochester Hills. So, Mr. Crook called me and he's a business owner here on Campbell Street, and he's like, so if he doesn't, so on their drawings that they submitted, Mr. Lucherco showed a new easement parallel to the property lines, still got Mr. Crook to his property. So, I saw that and said, you, did George sign off on this yet? Well, he will, no, no, did he sign off? You can't go to the planning commission, because if you, he doesn't sign off, you can't build your building through the easement, he has a legal right to that easement. So, I've been mediating for two months with those two, it's not, they don't like each other, so we're trying to come to an agreement that he can provide access to Mr. Crook's property. Mr. Crook's worried about if he comes in later from Rochester Hills and says, I want to build 200 units of apartments and I have to use diversion, you all are going to, our people are going to say no. We can't tell you if they're going to say yes or no until you bring in a plan, but if you don't have an easement, you don't have any access to our road, you have to have that easement.